So, I don't know why you give this to like without you all of these.
All righty. And we have all of our paperwork, and I believe you had the last letter that was sent to you.
We do. We have correspondence from Deputy Chief Corcoran. Actually, if we could ask the town manager to read that into the record.
Certainly. Address the Board of Selectmen, Dear Sirs, Lou Brizol is currently in the process of upgrading the sprinkler protection at their 207 Lowell Street facility. I have received plans and stamped fire protection engineered documentation for modifications to the existing sprinkler system that meet NFPA 13 and CMR 780 Section 9. I am satisfied that they are headed in the right direction, however, as of this date, no sprinkler work permit has been issued and the work has not been done. The inventory has been reduced to amounts below the license that they currently hold pending the sprinkler system upgrade. The reduction in inventory was determined by Cummings Engineering FPE as the existing sprinkler system was found to be inadequate to protect the quantities that were being stored at the facility. Lou Brizol has agreed to the inventory reduction. The board may increase the flammable and combustible liquids quantities to the amounts requested but should limit the amounts until the sprinkler system upgrades are completed, inspected by the Wilmington Fire Department, and a stamped affidavit is received that the work was done according to all applicable codes and is signed by Edmund J. Corcoran, the Deputy Chief, who, as you know, is present, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scannell, just for the sake of clarification, it's my understanding then that at this point in time, you believe you're headed in the right direction to have the work done that would be required in order to increase the quantities of inventory that you require from a business standpoint?
Yeah, we were trying to get ready for our expansion, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's why we needed to have the, we needed to permit originally upfront or the license so that we, as we continue to grow, we happen to be kind of lucky right now, we're doing work 24/7. So, we're making a lot of good products that are increasing our production growth. We're making a bulletproof glass that's being used right now in our troops for their own protection, and we're also making medical-grade tubing. So, our demand is high on us, and we have an aggressive plan to upgrade our system for even for our full expansion.
Okay. Do you have a date by which you would expect all of the work to be completed?
Our goal is to have it done by the end of this year, but as soon as we possibly can, yes. We've already got quotes in place, we're waiting for corporate funding, and we got vendors ready to go. Bill Dixon is my facilities manager, he probably can give you more information on that, but we are going very aggressive on getting this done as soon as possible.
Okay, and I guess, you know, I think I speak for the rest of the board when I say that we collectively try to accommodate business and to be reasonable and to try and, you know, help business continue to move forward and, you know, provide permits and whatnot in a manner that enables you to keep going on a certain schedule. But in this case, I'm a little bit confused about some of the discussions that we've had, brief as they may have been, in July and August. I had the, I was left with the impression that the work really was going to be done, and that's why we continued it to the next hearing. But based on the Deputy Chief's recommendation, that doesn't seem to be the case. So, I'm just concerned, in this case, about issuing some kind of a permit that would have contingencies and conditions like that. It seems to make more sense to have all of that work completed and then come to the board for that permit. Does that make sense? Have plans changed? Is there just been a?
I think it just takes, taken us a little bit longer, I think, to put things together, and then it's still a question of which category certain things fall in. Yeah, things were not as easily viewable from our point of view.
Okay. And sometimes things just take longer than expected. I'm not being critical of that, I just don't want to be.
We already had, we already had a license before that had X amount of materials. We were trying to go almost 2X so that we could go with our expansion. As of right now, we don't have, we don't even have what we had last year. So, we would like to, you know, I guess I'd get this thing going so that we can keep our product lines going to our actual demand. But we're not exceeding any of the numbers that we were, that we are given.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with the Chairman's statement. I was pretty clear at the last time you were here, and it was like, oh, you know, go ahead. However, you know, the deputy in his letter states that there's certain things that really need to be met, and I'm going to agree with the deputy pertaining to his letter that it was dated September 21st. I mean, I think you need to show a little bit more good faith effort that we're going to expand the sprinklers. You know, here you're looking for, you know, obviously a permit here this evening, and, you know, I would hope to think we're going to go in a positive direction to make sure we're taking care of more of that particular need before we start going to another level. You know, I just, because I remember that meeting as well, and it was going to progress in that manner. That's the impression that I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree also with the Chairman. I think this is something we might want to hold off to until complete.
Till all the, all the upgrades have been complete.
Right.
Absolutely. I mean, that's a priority. I'm sure this, I see folks out here in the audience, and I'm sure that's a major concern of theirs. That's a major concern of me being elected official in this community, make sure, you know, we upgrade before we give out an approval to go right ahead. It sounds like you're telling us, well, we need the permit. I don't have a problem supporting a permit, but I want to make sure the upgrades are met. I want to make sure the Deputy Chief sends a letter to the board that everything is met. I mean, that's what we do with everybody else in this community, as well as, you know, people in our private, as well as public sector. You know, we even hold our own boards accountable. When they want to do something, a expansion or whatever, the town, they have to meet certain needs of Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and, you know, there's certain criterias that need to get met to show good faith and go to the next level. And I'd be kind of hesitant to go forward from this point on until we start seeing some progress. Thank you.
If that is the case, could we at least have the permit as we had it as last year and as an interim until we have the completion before we do the upgrade? If we don't have a permit, we're running on a month-to-month rate, waiting for this to elapse.
I guess I would refer that to the Deputy Chief and ask what you think is a sensible interim solution here.
The, you know, I agree with you gentlemen that we wait until the work is done. It's extensive work that has to be done. We hope to put on a fire pump and upgrade quite a few in-rack sprinklers, which they didn't have before, so there's a lot to it. And we should, the inventory's actually been reduced from what it was, because when the Fire Protection Engineer did his analysis, he found out that the system wasn't adequate for the inventories that they had built up in the building. So, with them, we've worked, we've reduced the amounts. They should stay at those current low amounts that the sprinkler system will protect. And then when we upgrade, when the sprinklers are done, they can increase the amounts.
And that message is clear, but from a technical standpoint, are they, you're operating now under last year's permit and have?
They have a license.
Okay.
Which, a license is issued by the state for quantities of flammable liquids. The permits cover the amounts that are underneath licensable quantities. Some of the quantities on the licenses are 10,000 gallons. So, if somebody has 500 gallons, we cover it with a permit from the Fire Department.
So, as far as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, you know, they have to have the safety systems in place also to.
So, as far as the Fire Department's concerned, I want to make sure that I understand you right. As far as the Fire Department is concerned, they currently are operating, because their volumes have been reduced below that level, they're operating lawfully right now.
Right, and, yes, they are. And those were the suggestions of Cummings Engineering. Reduce it to the amounts that they have, and the system is adequate. And they can't pile it as high on the racks. There's lots of different things that they look at.
Okay.
The way it is right now, we're satisfied with that.
Okay.
That's all I meant, Sirs. I want to maintain that originally I'd said that when we showed up today that that ended and we had to go for a new one. That's all I was saying.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that that's not true. We're going to continue the way we are, get the upgrades done, approved, and then come back again when we are fully ready.
Yeah, that, I think that would be, I think that'd be helpful, and that'd be the wise move for the town. Depending, it doesn't sound, first of all, it sounds like by the end of the year, that's a significant amount of time, and secondly, it doesn't sound like it's etched in stone. It might make sense for you to withdraw this application and then submit a new one so that we can have the public hearing and people feel as though they're getting a, you know, a good look at it when it comes out. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay, so how do I withdraw?
If, if you think that makes sense, just move to withdraw it, and the board can accept that if they.
Yes, I request to withdraw our request at this time.
Any objection to that from the board? And we probably should entertain a motion to that effect, to accept the withdrawal. That's a desire of the board.
I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of the applicant here this evening.
Okay, made in second, and that's without prejudice. We would expect you to submit that again.
Yes, sir.
All over the favor? Is this unanimous? Thank you, good luck. I know that you've been upfront with the Fire Department, things just taking a little bit longer than you'd hope, but we'll see you when it's all buttoned up.
It's not as easy as people think it would be.
Sure it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Our next appointment is scheduled for 7:10, and it's with Joseph M. Gleason, Verizon New England Inc., regarding a public hearing relative to the request of Verizon New England Inc. and Redding Municipal Light Department to place one stub pole on Cunningham Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason. I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England Inc. office located at 28 Diana Lane in Drakett. Mr. Chairman, the request before you this evening is what we're calling a Redding Municipal Light request. The way it works between the telephone company and the local electrical provider is that throughout Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we divvy up the towns and municipalities and what have you, and designate each community as pole-set responsibilities. As it turns out, Wilmington is a Verizon pole-set responsibility, which is a big reason why you see me here so often on matters pertaining to Verizon. This request, however, comes to us from, through Redding Municipal Light, and what they're looking to do is place a stub pole on the east-ole side of Cunningham Street at the Beeching Avenue intersection. A stub pole is basically an undersized pole. It doesn't, it doesn't carry facilities and equipment. What it does is, it's a sustaining structure. We place stub poles across the street from existing pole lines, and we run a pole-to-pole guide between an existing pole and the pole line and the stub pole to provide support and integrity to that pole line. The reason that we need to place a stub pole in that location is that Redding Municipal Light is engaged in a upgrade in that area. That section of town is a little bit older, and what you see in older sections of town are basically some undersized poles that are having, they're getting old and having a difficult time carrying their weight. So, Redding Municipal Light is in the process of changing out a lot of the poles in that area, and they've designated this location as a spot that probably would be well-served by a sustaining structure. I would only add that, having gone out there and looked at the locus, if there's any inclination to approve the petition, which I hope there is, that perhaps you would add some language in there just as a reminder to both utilities, because sometimes they forget, and it makes problems, that if there's a tree warden in town, that approval be conditioned upon the tree ward's review of this petition as well. It looks like there's going to need to be some trimming, if maybe not some tree removal, at that location to place that pole. So, sometimes I'm looking to nip a problem in the bud. Sometimes we get the approval, the tree people go out, they cut the trees down, and the next thing you know, we're getting, you know, we're getting a firestorm from the abutters. So, I want to avoid that right here and just send a message to both Verizon and RMLD to make sure they check with the tree ward.
Okay, and certainly we can address that in a moment. Before I forget, is, when you talk about these stub poles, I get the impression this is some kind of interim measure because RMLD would be looking to increase the poles based on what you just described.
No, no, the stub poles are generally permanent, and as I said, what they do is they will put the pole across the street from any location that they think requires a sustaining facility. I think that the reason that they're looking at that location, and again, I don't want to speak for RMLD, but I looked at the pole, and I looked at what was on the poles, and those poles, especially at that intersection of Beecher and Cunningham, Beeching, excuse me, and Cunningham, the existing pole line is carrying a lot of facilities. So, what they're going to obviously do is they're going to put a, upgrade pole at that location, or in that area, I would assume, and then use that stub pole to add some additional integrity to the pole line.
All right. I understand that better now, thank you. With respect to the tree warden, you're testing my memory on the town shot, right? The DPW?
DPW Superintendent.
This super is?
They should be in contact with us on a site.
I know if we go out there and cut something, somebody's going to be unhappy, so.
Okay. Questions, comments, we'll go to the board and then to the audience, and then we'll take it on. Anything?
Out of curiosity, I wish I had driven down Cunningham before tonight. These poles, does this street have sidewalks, and how do the poles get oriented relative to personal or private property and the street when there isn't a sidewalk in place? And I don't know, is there a sidewalk on Cunningham?
I don't believe there is. I don't believe there's a sidewalk on Cunningham, and the actual location for the proposed stub pole has been staked, and it is well off of the asphalt surface, so there wouldn't be any problem. Everybody walking along the side of the road and walking into a pole there. To answer your question, I know this has come up, I think it came up quite a bit when the work was being done on Route 129. Relative to the poles, what Verizon likes to do, as far as the placement of poles, it likes, first of all, most of the poles that, well, all the poles that we request permission from you to place are all within the public taking. Now, that doesn't mean it's in the asphalt surface, it just means it's within the extent of the taking, because sometimes that taking extends significantly past the asphalt surface. As far as the placement of the poles are concerned, we try as best we can to keep those poles placed as close to the lot lines as possible. That way, you're not interfering with people's sight views and what have you out their window. It doesn't always work, but we try and make an effort in that regard. As far as the placement of the poles and sidewalks are concerned, and again, it doesn't necessarily apply to Cunningham Street, but it did apply on 129, there are requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and that our engineers are sensitive to make sure that clearances on the sides of the pole, or, excuse me, on the sidewalk as opposed to where the pole is, provide for the appropriate ADA width to allow for wheelchairs and whatnot. So, I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the audience?
If we may just have your name and address for the record? Antonia Salido. I live on 7 Beeching Avenue where the poles is located. It's my understanding that the pole will be located across the street. There are many trees to cut down. I don't really think that there'll be branches, I think there'll be actual trees to be cut down. Also, will you advise the neighborhood when the people will be coming in to cut the trees?
To answer that question, Mr. Chairman, I agree. I saw where the pole was placed, and it does look as if there would probably be some requirement for the removal of a tree, if not a number of trees, which is why I brought that issue to the attention of the board, because I don't want Verizon to run afoul of the town relative to that. Generally speaking, once the approval is granted by this board and we get the appropriate sign-offs from tree warden or DPW, there wouldn't necessarily be a notification to the abutters that Verizon or RMLD contractors, tree contractors, would be out to cut and/or trim those trees. If it pleased the board, I can take this abutter's name and make a note in the file to have right-of-way contact, this abutter, to let them know that we're probably sending out some people to cut the trees. But as a matter of course, once the approval is received, we generally wouldn't be sending out notification for tree work.
Yes?
Martha Stevenson, Seven Chain Lurie. I have two questions, I guess. Who owns the parcel where the blue pole will be placed? And are there any wetlands within 100 feet of placement of this pole?
To answer that question again, the placement of the pole would be within the taking. It's within the public way. So, I guess in a roundabout way, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts/Tide of Wilmington owns the locus where the pole is to be placed. Relative to wetlands, it's up to our engineers, as part of their review requirements, to determine whether or not there are any wetlands within 100 feet of the location. Even if it's a pole, we will petition the appropriate Conservation Commission if we're within the buffer zone. Nothing in the information I have tonight indicates that we're within 100 feet of the wetlands. If somebody who has seen the locus and has information contrary to that, I'd be more than happy to discuss it with them and then request the matter be tabled, because I'd like to know myself if we're within a wetland area. The engineer hasn't indicated to me that we are, but if we are, we'd be more than happy to put this for Conservation Commission and then bring it back to you.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. There are a number of parcels off of Cunningham Street that are town-owned under the care, custody, and management of the Conservation Commission, and I just appreciated the board would double-check with planning and conservation to make sure that this isn't one of those parcels. Or if it is, that they definitely go before the commission to review the deciding of this particular tree cutting, because that's a huge issue for a conservation.
Thank you. What's the board want to do with those two issues and those two questions? Board inclined to take action subject to DPW and Conservation Administrator? Is the board inclined to continue the hearing and get information back on those two fronts? How does the board want to? Actually, before the board answers, I assume there is no emergency with service or safety or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I'm inclined, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing and gather more information from the respective Superintendent and Conservation Commission, just to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's before taking action. I think taking action contingent upon, in this particular case, is jumping a little ahead. That's my opinion on the subject.
Anybody else? All right, why don't we handle it by way of a motion? Somebody offer a motion.
See if I can restate that. I would like to move that we continue this hearing, delay judgment until we have a clearer collection of information from the DPW Superintendent with regards to the trees, whether they be removed or otherwise, as well as the Conservation Commission relative to ownership of the abutting properties.
I think that is a motion. We have a second. Anything further?
Yes, I know you're in the middle of, I just request, would it be possible, and I'm all in favor of having the matter table so we can determine that there's no issue with CONCON or whatever, could we get a date certain for the continuation of the public hearing?
I think that makes, that makes sense. Mike, how long do you think you would need administratively to get some substantive?
I think we could do it by the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, which would be October 13th. Is there anything scheduled?
Okay, Tuesday, the 13th. Would you be available that night, Mr. Gleason?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right, so we'll, as long as there's no objection, we'll accept the motion to continue to the, to the meeting of October 13th. Why don't we do it at 7:10? That motion's been made and seconded in conditions outlined by Mr. Shampoo. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Our 7:15 appointment is scheduled with Michael J. Webster, PG LSP, GeoInsight, James M. De Lorenzo, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and Joseph Coyne, Department of Environmental Protection, regarding a project status update pertaining to activities taking place at the Olin Chemical Superfund Site, 51 Ames Street.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm James D. Lorenzo. I work for EPA's New England office in Boston, and I'm the remedial project manager under our Superfund program for the Olin Chemical Superfund Site, and I was asked here tonight by the town manager to provide a brief status update ahead of a broader public meeting we're going to be having here in town on October 19th. So, with that, I prepared about five to 10 minutes of brief comments for an update, and then I would be happy to take questions from the board and members of the community who are here tonight.
That would be great, and just for folks who might be watching, also, we want people to understand this is a cooperative effort, and we appreciate your being here, but also specifically tonight, we wanted to make sure that if our own consultants had any specific issues to address, that we make sure we have plenty of time for that. So, please do.
Okay, thank you. The site is Region 1's newest site, added to the National Priorities list in mid-2006. In July of 2007, we reached a settlement agreement with the Olin Corporation and previous owner-operators to cover all of EPA's expenses for oversight and to allow them, under their own efforts, to move forward to fully characterize the nature and extent of contamination that has originated from the former Olin property located on Ames Street. That particular property has been subject to numerous investigations by the Olin Corporation and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, previously dating back to the early 1980s. So, we started our investigation of the site, looking at all of the historic documents, investigations, and data that have been generated over the past couple of decades. It's quite significant, and really, that's been the focus of our efforts for the, since the settlement was reached in July. We've learned a lot about the property. There is clearly a plume of contamination that extends into the Maple Meadow Brook that has previously impacted the town's water supply. It's uncertain how far to the south, towards the Wilmington Town Line, that plume extends. We remain concerned about private wells, which continue to operate in the Cook Ave and Border Ave neighborhood, and at the request of EPA, Olin has been sampling those wells. We're also concerned that the plume of contaminants in groundwater may extend to areas to the north and east of Maple Meadow Brook. So, those areas are going to be focused on moving forward. On the site itself, there certainly has been numerous studies of soil contamination, sediment in groundwater. There are some ditches that cross the site. In the past, Olin has taken numerous removal actions under the Mass DEP to remove former lagoon areas and to remediate areas of obvious contamination. However, there has never been a holistic look at the soil across that property, and that's one of the focuses of our study moving forward, is to now look at that property from top to bottom, top of soil, down to groundwater, and to, you know, fully characterize the soil, sediment, and surface water on that property, and then to extend the characterization effort to the various ditches and drainage ways that emanate from that property. Certainly, there is concern for contamination that appears to be extending from the east ditch, just east of the property, down into the New Boston Drainage Way, potentially down into what has now become known as Landfill Brook, as I understand it, the North Pond area. And these areas are all shown on the map there. I apologize. It's not easy to view for the public here. And then also, there is going to be an effort to characterize Saddle Brook and Maple Meadow Brook itself to the north and west of the Olin property. And then, of course, groundwater itself, there have been numerous studies in the past. There have been over 100 monitoring wells installed, There have been over 100 monitoring wells installed, but there are still questions, as I mentioned a few moments ago, about the extent of contamination, particularly down towards the Cook Ave, Border Ave neighborhood, and to the areas north and west of Maple Meadow Brook. So several monitoring wells will be installed moving forward. So basically, you know, what it boils down to after looking at tens of thousands of pages of data, literally, over the past two, almost two years, yes, there's been a lot of work done on the property, but really, there's never been a comprehensive look, and that's what Superfund does, takes a comprehensive look at all the media. And, you know, one of the first steps in that list I handed out is a list of compounds. There's over 200 chemicals on that list, and those, you know, in the past, again, even though there have been all of these efforts in the past, Olin, because of the regulatory framework, you know, it's not that they did anything wrong, but they really only looked at a few of these chemicals here and there. Some were looked at in one area, maybe the former lagoon area. Different ones were looked at in some of the soil impoundments. Some different ones were looked at in groundwater. There's never been this holistic look. So basically, all of these chemicals are going to be looked at, to some extent, in all media across the site. And we spent a lot of time looking at the historical records for the Olin Chemical Corporation and their predecessors, for other manufacturing businesses that do the type of thing that Olin used to do out there, and all the historic documents we could find to come up with that list. And I think we have a very comprehensive list of chemicals now that will allow us to focus on what is really going on out there. So that was one significant step we've taken, and so that list is now final. There's also a work plan that was recently finalized last month that will allow us to, again, characterize all the on-property areas, all the off-property ditches and surface water areas, and basically, all the potentially impacted groundwater. And again, we'll be looking at all those various chemicals, some very rare, certainly not mainstream. We're going to continue to look at the Cook Ave neighborhood, and a particular chemical known as NDMA, which had previously impacted the town of Wilmington's water supply over in Maple Meadow Brook, has shown up in two wells on Cook Ave, at extremely low concentrations, not to the point where it's a health concern, but to the point where it's a concern because it's there. And so we're going to continue to look at that, and if the levels do come up to a point where EPA can take action, we will take action at that point. Also, over the past year, we issued a technical assistance grant to the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee. That's a community group in town. It allows them to hire a technical consultant to review the work that EPA does and that the PRPs, potentially responsible parties like Olin, produce. And so that grant is in place. They have hired Cambridge Environmental, and everything, all of the documents that are created for EPA's review is shared with Cambridge Environmental through work and with the town of Wilmington through GeoInsight, your consultant, as well as put in the public record, which exists at the Wilmington Public Library. So I think I've touched on all I wanted to say tonight, other than, again, to reemphasize that we will have a broader public meeting on October 19th at the auditorium at the middle school, where I'll give a far more comprehensive presentation, and our consultants will be there to help answer questions. So I know that was a lot in a very short time.
We appreciate that. I guess we can go to the board or turn it over to Mike. Either way, Mike, do you have some comments that you were prepared to make?
Sure. I think that might make sense to follow up just real briefly. Since the last time I came and met with you, basically, as Jim described, EPA's been coming up to speed on the historical work that's been done out at the site. And over the course of the last year, they've developed a work plan. Focus of that work plan is really to describe where samples are going to be collected, how they're going to be analyzed, and to develop that comprehensive understanding of the site that Jim was talking about. That document was finalized last month. It was a collaborative effort in that there were multiple draft versions where Works Consultant and Work, GeoInsight on behalf of the town, and other interested parties were able to provide Jim with comments on where samples should be collected, how they should be analyzed. Jim reviewed those, and then, to the degree EPA was receptive to the technical arguments for additional sampling, they were incorporated into this final work plan. I would say GeoInsight on behalf of the town reviewed each version of that draft work plan, provided detailed comments on the technical approach. As you're aware, we've been representing the town for multiple years now. We were hooked into what the issues from a town's perspective were. We put those before Jim, in front of Jim, and the large majority of our comments, I think, are accommodated by the work plan, meaning that there's going to be sampling done. In certain instances, EPA reviewed our comments, and I think at this point, it could be best classified as they're deferring judgment as to whether or not our comment has merit once the initial set of data is collected. The work plan, the field investigation program, is somewhat phased. They'll be going out, collecting information, reviewing that information in the context of historical data, and then evaluating whether or not the site has been characterized to the level that will allow Jim and the folks at EPA to look at how best to go about cleaning it up. We're on top of the comments that were deferred. We're going to be looking at the data as they come back, and we'll be prepared to resubmit comments to the agencies once we've had a chance to take a look at the information. I think the Superfund activities are really going to now switch into a new phase, which is the field work phase. Olin is looking at two phases or two series of doing field activities that'll probably occur over the next 12 to 15 months. So less work plan review and more, they're going to be out there in the field. That work includes several rounds of collecting groundwater samples from new wells that'll be installed out there and old wells. So for practical intents and purposes, the program is really going to be switching over into field activities, field events, sampling events at the property itself, sampling events off-site, and that's part of what the public meeting on October 19th is going to be, is kind of letting the town know, now that Olin has committed to this work plan, what actually are they going to be doing in town for the next, like I said, 12 to 15-month period. From the Superfund perspective, the project will kind of go in a hold mode as far as those, Olin will have to look at that information and then pass it on to EPA before I suspect Jim will feel comfortable allowing us to take a look at the information. But to a certain degree, this is what we've been waiting for all along. We've identified there's information that is needed to make good decisions out there. We don't have that information, and this work plan is really the outline that says, "Olin, go collect this information." So I would suspect that, not suspect, but the public meeting on the 19th will describe in a little bit more detail the kinds of field activities that are going to be occurring and provide a little bit more specificity about activities that'll be occurring this fall, probably be somewhat of a lull during the winter time, and then a large percentage of these field activities will probably occur next summer.
Okay. And Mr. D. Lorenzo, would you agree with generally the comments made in terms of the interaction and EPA's adopting some of the concerns of both the town and the consultant working for the work group? We got, you would give the same outline of how it's unfolding, where we're at with that?
Yeah, I would characterize it the same manner. We certainly consider all of the written comments we've received and appreciate the efforts of GeoInsight and Work and their consultant, and we look at that in the context of our guidance and our regulations and incorporate, you know, to the extent we can, what we feel are good comments, and they've come up with, it's helpful to have more eyes looking at this, so. We, I welcome that type of feedback, and we have been able to utilize, I would say, a majority of it. I think that's an accurate description. Some of the other issues will come to light as data is collected, and then we'll, you know, everything will get addressed as we move forward. I'm pretty confident of that, trying to keep this as transparent a process as possible. And I think we've achieved that goal so far.
Good.
There's a lot of documents going back and forth, and it's kind of hard to keep on top of them all, but I think, you know, we've reached that point. I think Mike put it very well, where we're finally moving from document review to field work, which is an important milestone, which is why we want to have this public meeting on October 19th, to describe what that field work is and how we reached it, and then what the next steps are beyond there to get us to the ultimate cleanup, which is where we all want to take this.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board before we go to the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm particularly very grateful what I'm hearing tonight, particularly from you, the representative from the U.S. Government, the EPA, because it is a quality-of-life issue, and I don't think we need to tell you. I mean, when those wells were in service, it was perhaps one of our greatest natural resources. We were selling water to other communities. That's not happening. Now we're looking to buy water, and sad as it is, because it is a quality-of-life issue. I'm sure at the end of the day, when you go home to your family, you want to make sure that, you know, everyone's protected. And like I said, I'm really glad to hear what's going on. It sounds like you expanded your scope of the investigation, where you're expanding into all the chemicals, and you're out in the Cook area, street area, and I'm really glad to hear that, because I got faith in the government, and I know with your involvement, you're really going to do something for us, and that's what we need. We need Big Brother to help this small, little community, and we're really banking on it, and I appreciate you being here. I feel more comfortable knowing that the state has handed it to you, and the feds are doing, I think, a great job, and I'm really glad what I'm hearing tonight. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anything else?
Yeah, if I may. I heard a couple of buzzwords that I was excited about, transparency. I appreciate that, you know, just being visible and making it clear to us and as well the community. I'm very, I'm excited about the 19th. I was excited about tonight to learn what's been going on and get a better understanding. We see the documents, but some, a lot of it is technical, and it's, you know, it's above my pay grade, as they say. So it's good to sort of break it down. I appreciate you coming in and doing that. I definitely will look forward to the 19th. Two things that I want to bring up are, and I know it's premature, but I have to ask. We talk a lot about field activities, we move from the document review to field activities, and certainly that's an exciting benchmark, but at some point, we will get to the point where we're going to clean this place up. Yes?
Yes.
That's coming?
It's coming. It's a ways off.
It is.
I mean, the field, Mike characterized the field phase as 12 to 15 months, and that's a good characterization, but given the complexities at this site, I wouldn't be surprised if there's going to be a second phase of field work that'll have to be done. It's comprehensive, you know, there's going to be over 200 soil samples collected on the property, there's going to be over 150 groundwater samples, but that sounds like a lot, but really, and each one of those will have up to 240 chemicals analyzed. Lot of information, but it's a very complex site. I wouldn't be surprised if we're back in the field again after 15 months answering some residual questions. Okay? And then we have to evaluate everything in the context of risk. I mean, a lot of these chemicals, like I said, aren't mainstream chemicals. They're not your mainstream solvent that the gas station around the corner use. They're very different, and they do take some, you know, you really have to dig into the toxicity information to figure out, okay, we found it, now what does that mean? Is there a safe level? If there is, what is it, and how do we get to that? So, you know, yes, we're heading into field work, and I'm very excited about that, and it's a very positive step forward. Once we're done with that, we're going to have to go retreat back in the document review now, look at all that data, look at the risk associated with it, and figure out where we're at again before we can take, before the shovel hits the ground, as they say.
That makes a ton of sense. The question that it brings up in my head is, is there a concern about this plume spreading while we do the due diligence and the hard work that is going on? I mean, you said that we've already started to detect, is it NDMA that we've seen?
NDMA, yes.
In some private wells? Or, so it's starting to come. Are we, you know, what will happen if we take too much longer?
Right. I mean, very good question. I hear that all the time. That's why we're out in the community now, looking at those wells. If we, you know, our number-one concern is public safety. If we see a problem with any of those private wells, we will certainly then take action. Right now, we think we're seeing a problem. They were sampled for in 2005 for NDMA. We didn't see them. Now we're starting to see them in two wells at very low part-petrillion concentrations. Part-petrillion is very, very small. I mean, but it's a concern because it's there. Is that evidence of a leading edge of the plume? I don't know. So we're going to continue to push Olin to go back and go back. If they won't, we'll go back and do it, but they've agreed to do it so far. So all I can say is, you know, we're moving through the process as quickly as possible. It's a complex process. We see a problem, there's a way to step out of that process and take action. We do have the regulatory framework to provide clean water, whatever that means, whether it's bottled water or an alternate water supply or, you know, treatment at the wellhead. So we can always step out of our site characterization process, and we have regulatory authorities that allow us to act. So we're going to keep an eye on the perimeter of the plume, not only in Cook Ave and Border Ave, but also on the northern side of Maple Meadow Brook, where there are some irrigation wells. And we're keeping a close eye on those, and we'll continue to do that. Right now, the action item is to continue to sample them, and if we see a trend up, then we'll have to shift into, or that'll allow us to shift into, an action mode. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The town wells that are closed, do you ever go back and do like any extensive testing as far as comparison to what you're finding on, like this list, to what, you know, occasionally that you find on the sites that are closed?
Well, we want to look at all accessible wells in the area. There are, I forget the exact number, but over 120 existing monitoring wells are scattered throughout the study area, and then we have a dozen or so private wells that we know of in the Cook Ave, Border Ave area. And then there are wells like the former Semino wells, the former town supply wells. It's our goal to sample all of those through this process.
We do sample them.
Yeah. When it comes to the, you know, there are discussions we need to have with the DPW regarding, you know, can we actually sample? Is there a way to turn on those wells and sample them again? There are monitoring wells in there around the former supply wells we're going to look at, but I would like EPA to have samples of the former supply wells themselves, and that's just a matter of, is there a way to turn the switch on and get samples from them?
Flush them out and pull the sample. I was just curious, because when you see this kind of chemical, just in this one area, that if you picked up further downstream, that you're saying, wow, you know, it's in, you know, point A and then spread to point B, you know, then you know that you haven't stopped the stoppage as far as chemicals, that actually the water table or the flow of the water table is pulling somewhere, and that's my concern. In other words, you know, is it weakening or is it building up in a certain area more extensive, and can we catch it?
Well, and, you know, it's a good observation. You know, a lot of the chemicals have settled in what you've probably heard of as this dense aqueous phase, liquid or dapple. You know, there's this pool of several million gallons of really concentrated chemicals that have formed on top of bedrock under the larger groundwater-contaminated plume. That stuff remains a source to the groundwater. It's not really moving much. Groundwater itself, you know, moves, but it moves very slowly. So that's the one benefit, you know, feet per year generally. So again, we're stepping out. The new wells we're putting in are all at the perimeter of our understanding of the current plume, so we feel like we, you know, we got the guts, pretty well characterized. We're really focused on the perimeter now and really trying to highlight where is the actual cutoff between clean and impacted groundwater, and that's going to be our focus for the groundwater study moving forward.
Do you think realistically, that before you really get into the projects, you know, ingredients of the site, that it'd be about three to five-year plan?
I think it'll be, when I came out back, May 2008 was the last public meeting we had, and I told the community to expect five years from that date to the point where we talk about a cleanup plan or perhaps start cleanup. I think that's still, I think we're three, three and a half years away from that, talking about a cleanup plan for the site.
And legally, being here tonight, do you feel that the budget for the environmental, that the state will support as far as the budget going in this kind of direction?
The state would support, but they have to support it. Most of this money is federal monies.
That's right. Actually, through our settlement, it's Olin, it's potentially responsible party money. So Olin, you know, it's Olin's consultants taking all this data, with our consultants, GeoInsight, and Cambridge Environmental looking over their shoulders. So they're footing the bill for this, so it's not coming out of the taxpayer doldrums at all, fortunately. And on top of that, they're paying EPA to oversee it. So so far, we've collected over $900,000 in oversight costs since July of 2007, and so they're paying the bills right now, and we hope to hold them to that until the site's all cleaned up.
I mean, I know the tax--
And all that money is filtered through the feds.
Correct.
I know the taxpayer is under a lot of strain, and what you just said, I think the Commonwealth especially-- town wealth is especially going to be very happy under those terms. And at the same time, we're going ahead and taking on a, a site cleanup, which is, you know, my hat off to the legislation, my hat off to the state in the federal.
Questions or comments from the audience?
Yes.
Based on what you've said tonight, and I appreciate the fact that you continue to send us current information, whether it's coming directly from the EPA or directly from you. Based on what I've heard tonight, based on what I've read, any talk, and I hope it's negative, any talk of developing that area is light years away. That's the way it sounds to me. Is that correct? It's a long ways out.
I believe, I have not heard of any talk of development since 2007, when I first took over this project. So I haven't heard anything happening on that front.
But based on your studies, based on what you're looking at and what you talked about tonight, would you say that, you know, it's, it's a long ways out, even if you get to talk about that?
At a minimum, we need to complete our investigation before anything could happen there. I mean, our, our relation to any development out there would be to ensure any workers or any residents would be protected out there. And right now, we, we don't have a good feel for how contaminated the soil is and where. Until those questions are answered, which year and a half plus off still.
So we're still in fairly good shape. The other question I have, and maybe you can't answer it. As you continue to look at these private wells, I assume Olin Chemicals made a commitment to pick up the cost of replacing that situation also?
That would have to be a separate discussion. Under the current settlement-
Although they should.
I, I don't disagree.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Any closing comments from any of the three?
Just, I would like to urge people to come to the public meeting on October 19th at 7:00 PM at the middle school.
Okay. After having said, I did see an arm go up, Ms. Stevenson.
I wanted to say too.
Okay.
And then I'll just reiterate that Geo Insight has been involved and plans to continue to be involved in reviewing documents and providing comments on the Act of the Town. And Jim has been, has facilitated that to this point, so we'll, we'll continue to do that.
And that was a commitment that you had made from day one and we appreciate honoring that to this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you all again. Have a good night. Give these gentlemen a chance to head out and then we'll proceed with communications in a moment. Have a good night. Thank you. See you on the 19th. Mr. Carr, communications, please.
Yes, sir. We have correspondence from Marilyn Brown, the chief of the Bureau of Local Assessment for the Department of Revenue, giving notification to the Board of Assessors of preliminary certification for the fiscal year 2010 townwide triennial evaluation project. Essentially, Mr. Chairman, it means that the Department of Revenue has reviewed the new values that have been established by the town and has approved its methodology. And so now the Board of Assessors is authorized to continue with the tax rate setting process. I also want to make note of the cooperation that we received from the residents during this whole project that enabled us to complete the revaluation and really timely in a very successful manner. The preliminary values are now available for public inspection in the assessors' office at Town Hall. And when the assessors receives a final notification of certification, which we have to wait for, and the fiscal year 2000 tax rate has been set, then all the new values will actually be posted on the town's online database. I'm glad to see that Shelley Newhouse hasn't left with a throng, who have, who've just left the room. And you know Shelley's the director of the Board of Health, the Health Department. And we just have a couple of pieces of correspondence that I just want to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen and just let them know what's happening on that end as well with regard to the whole flu issue. We have correspondence in the Massachusetts Department of Public Health addressing the issue of seasonal and H1N1 vaccines in terms of their availability. What you have been reading in the newspapers is very true. Many communities, just like Wilmington, are waiting for their allotment of vaccine. The town is making every effort to make available to its residents both the seasonal and the H1N1 flu vaccines. However, like other communities, we really must rely on the State's Department of Public Health and the manufacturers to give us the supply that we need to immunize our residents. Unfortunately, we've learned, and you will learn as you've read this missile from the Department of Public Health, that scheduled deliveries of the remaining doses of seasonal flu vaccine are not as readily available as we had originally anticipated. So as a result, we haven't been able to schedule a townwide seasonal flu vaccine. We're hoping to do so by the end of October, but that may even be pushed into early November because we just cannot schedule a townwide vaccine, a townwide clinic without having the vaccine. Makes little or no sense to do that at this point. We did get in early September about 375 doses of the seasonal flu vaccine and as a result of that, we held a school-based clinic for youngsters in grades K through 12 on September 23rd. As you know, from prior reports here to this board by Ms. Newhouse, public health authorities had identified this age group as a priority for immunization. And that was somewhat of a departure from years past when we hadn't been immunizing youngsters. But we did hold a program. The program was extremely successful and I have to give a great credit to Shelley Newhouse and to Joanne Benton, the superintendent of schools, along with the public health nurse, Judy Bags, and the head of the nursing services, Doreen Crowe, for the school department. We really had a very successful program. We were able to accommodate everybody and in fact, just I can tell you sort of anecdotally, we had 375 doses of the vaccine and just at about 3:01, we distributed what we believed was all of the doses. And one woman came in with a child and came in just after 3:00 and Shelley had to indicate to that person that it was too late. We used them all, went back. Shelley checked, one nurse had one vaccine left. We tracked the woman down in the playground. She came in and she was the 375th, I think, satisfied customer. I can't tell you that the children who received the vaccine were satisfied customers, as we had lots of stories about, about those. But at any rate, that's the information that we, we have. We are still strongly recommending, as is the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Public Health, for folks to take advantage of their own providers or alternate providers of the flu vaccine. We, we think it's, it's very important that you are vaccinated as soon as possible. And that's, that's really what the, what the goal is. Everybody's collective goal is to get as many people as possible vaccinated. With regard to the H1N1, we have something going out into town topics this week that really is going to try to give some guidance on that. Again, this is a new virus with a new vaccine being developed and we're still waiting for that. As a matter of fact, it's now a question as to which vaccine supply is going to come in first. And the job that we've entrusted Mrs. Newhouse to take care of is really to coordinate these clinics and to make sure everybody who wants to be vaccinated is vaccinated. Additionally, you have a copy of an order regarding the exclusion requirements for pandemic influenza, H1N1 infection, which was released by John Arbuthnot, the commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. And it's essentially saying that individuals should remain at home and follow the home isolation instructions for patients with any confirmed influenza, to take it very seriously. But again, if you have an opportunity to go to the public health department, the local public health department website, which is www.healthilywilmingtoncoalition.org/boh, or take a look at the town topics, which is coming out with the, with the property tax bills later this week, you'll see some more information. All right. Did I cover it? Okay, Shelley? Yeah. Shelley's become the absolute flu expert for the town of Wilmington. The board has correspondence from Karen Nobert, the executive director of the State Ethics Commission, regarding changes to the Mass General laws, which relate to the state's conflict of interest laws. And they've written this to chief executives and members of the Board of Selectmen in various communities and other government officials, obviously, just to talk about the new enabling act and to indicate that many of the provisions of that act are going into effect over the next few months. Specifically, the board is being asked to make a designation of a, and I'll quote, "a senior-level employee of the municipality to serve as a liaison to the Ethics Commission." Specifically, this person would be responsible for disseminating information and to conduct educational seminars, et cetera, with the various assistance from the state agencies. We would also have to develop procedures that would enable employees to not only receive information about the conflict of interest laws, but also to receive training, online training every two years. We are being asked by date certain to take this action. Specifically, I believe the date is January 27th that the Board of Selectmen must act. And then the town also has to act with certain timelines to make sure that every town employee and school employee receives the summaries of the bill as well as online training. And so I wanted to bring this to the, to the attention of the board. Do you want to maybe take that under advisement at this point? I know there's a lot there.
I would. I mean, I, I mean, my thinking is that this legislation is so far-reaching in terms of who it applies to within the town and I still have questions about who it might apply to and who it might not.
And logistic and doing with every year.
Yeah. Yeah. It seems to me we ought to really make sure that we have a handle on what all the ramifications have for the town and then we can make a designation depending on some of those answers. And I think there's some interest. I've talked to one member about the possibility of having council weigh in. I think that makes sense. Maybe the first step to get the ball rolling might be to find out if they've, if, if town council's office has a planned brochure, presentation, CD, DVD, whatever, for all of their towns. Maybe that's something we can take advantage of and allow them to work efficiently. But if we could get some, some feedback from, from council and from the administration, then we'll figure out where to go from there. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, certainly. They're aggressive on the dates. Where's, this memo is dated September 22nd and they're asking for this to be completed by all municipal employees by December 28th. I, I think the definition of what that really is needs to be explained by either Ms. Nobert or, or town council, et cetera, because it seems, it's ambiguous at best in this letter. So I'd love to get a little more detail.
All right, we'll do that.
You have a memorandum from Carol Hamilton regarding the I-93 Triton interchange project. And essentially what we're suggesting is that folks may be interested in participating in what we are referring to as listening sessions that are going to be held in each community to discuss the development of a zoning strategy for the land around the proposed I-93 interchange. The, this process began when the three communities hired Vanessa Hagan-Bruslin to direct this particular zoning strategy effort. And we've had various meetings with them. They've also met with different property owners that may have an interest in the area. And the meetings afforded the consultant to assess owner expectations for the particular area and then to begin to identify opportunities and challenges as they relate to the project. Residents are invited to participate as well. All of the meetings have been open, but this is a specific meeting for residents of Wilmington on October 7th, scheduled for 6:00 PM here in room nine. And we'll be able to talk to you more and also get your input about this project. Obviously, the board is invited to attend if their schedules permit. The board also received an invitation to attend a special meeting to meet with Metropolitan Area Planning Council President Jay Ash on October 14th from 8:30 to 10:00 AM. The meeting is going to be here at the Town Hall. And then from here, the group will go over to Silver Lake for a tour of that particular low-impact development project that the town conducted with the Division of Conservation Resources a few years ago. And people will be invited to, to review that project, which has received an awful lot of attention from various groups for the success that we've been able to achieve there. So people, again, are invited to attend the meeting here at the Town Hall on 8:30 Wednesday, October 14th with MAPC President Jay Ash and a discussion of the Silver Lake project. The board has correspondence from Jane Lyman of Comcast regarding price adjustments as well as an enhanced network. This is a preview of what is going out, of what will, might have already gone out to residents. And again, it talks about the increase in certain of the services. For example, expanded basic is increasing now from $49.95 to $51.95 effective with the November billing statements. In addition, there's correspondence from Ms. Lyman about changes in their network. Current Comcast subscribers are going to be given additional network changes that are outlined in letters that are sent to them. We also have correspondence from Verizon, FiOS, specifically from Adam DiFilippo about the TV programming changes, again, for FiOS TV. And over here, they've provided us with information about programming changes, both to the Korean package and to the Chinese Mandarin package. In addition, there are letters going out to residents who have this particular service discussing the various changes. FiOS is also notifying us that there has been a change to their TV guide notification, which they have on their cable program. And again, that is going out indicating that there'll be some changes in the lineup where the current channel, that is on channel 48, moves to a different channel. And all of that information, again, is provided to the subscribers. The board received a letter from Kim Gainesborough, the chairman of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, regarding the local boards training for regulators, any of the boards who may be, of the members who may be interested in attending a seminar on October 16th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM in Andover to meet with the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. Staff are welcome to do so. We will be sending a staff member from the town who deals with that from my office to that meeting. They also ask us to provide information to- They also ask us to provide information to the licensing authorities, and obviously, we do that when the ABCC sends something out. The Board has correspondents from Dorothy Presser of the Suburban Coalition, again, inviting the Board to join the coalition. We seem to get this quite often. Some towns belong, some don't. I think Wilmington really gets its membership service from the MMA, and I believe that's what the Board has opted for in the past. But it is correspondence that is addressed to the Board, and I bring it to your attention as always. We also have information from the MMA regarding their statewide photo contest. A deadline is October 19th. The theme is called Simply Massachusetts. Anybody who is interested in submitting a photograph is welcome to either contact my office or the MMA directly, or go to the MMA website, and that will provide you with all of that information. The contest is open to anybody who would like to submit ideally a 10-inch by 8-inch horizontal color photograph that depicts scenery in Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, we have correspondents from Christine Hevaloni-Biler of the MWRA Advisory Board regarding a resolution from the MWRA Advisory Board seeking support for House Bill 3125, which is an act to expand the bottle bill. This should not necessarily be confused with what has come before the Board in the past and what will come before the Board on the next item on the agenda. But we did get this letter asking the Board to consider signing on to the bill. The bill would expand the existing bottle bill to include a 5-cent deposit on bottled water containers. And unreturned deposit receipts would be placed in a dedicated fund available to municipalities, water districts, and the MWRA to be used for water and sewer infrastructure repairs and projects. I contacted on behalf of the Board Christine just to ask her if this legislation differed in any way to House Bill 3515, which you will recall the Board decided to take no action on, particularly after hearing from its two state representatives, Murphy and Micali, indicating that they were not in favor of the bill. Christine wrote back that the, this, the, the bill I just referred to, H3515, which came to the Board prior, was sponsored, as you know, by Representative Wolf, and it was one of many versions of the legislation to expand the bottle bill to include non-carbonated beverages. In that particular bill, unclaimed deposits would go into a reestablished clean environment fund. This particular bill that the MWRA is supporting is similar in that it wants to include the bottled water, but it directs those, the unclaimed deposits, into a water and sewer infrastructure account rather than a clean environment fund. So that's the major, major difference at this point. You have a copy of the resolution, if that's something that the Board is interested in pursuing. And maybe as a companion piece, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how you want to analyze, but we again received a correspondence from MassRecycle asking the Board to sign the resolution in support of H3515. And as you know, the minutes would reflect that the Board did not approve it, but they also did not direct any other action except to take no action.
Yeah, I, I think the thinking at the time was, why spend your time doing it? But if they're going to press for an answer, if anybody's changed their mind, certainly speak up, otherwise we entertain a motion which reflects the will of the Board here.
If I understand what the intent here is, because this keeps on coming in front of us, and our discussion last month was effectively to take no action. So if we were to create a motion this evening, we'd, we'd take a vote to not support House Bill, which one? Either or both?
3515. Just go with that one.
Yeah. So could we communicate to Ms. Stewart that if, if we were to vote in that way, could, could we effectively be taking action, and our action be that we choose not to support the bill?
Yeah, I think if, unless the Board's position has changed, if we just have a motion to deny the request or not to sign proclamation, decline, that's a good, that's a good, better verb, I guess, then we certainly would have the manager forward that information.
I would make such a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a, motion's been made and seconded to decline the request to sign the resolution in support of House 3515. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
The Board has a request from Melissa Dougherty of the Bartwell Early Childhood Center PAC to use the municipal parking lot on Middlesex Avenue across from the Town Common for the purpose of having a yard sale fundraiser on Saturday, October 17th, 2009, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for their annual fundraising yard sale.
No scheduling conflicts?
No, I checked that.
They have a motion from the Board?
So move. Second.
Motion to grant the request. All those in favor? Unanimous?
The Board is being asked to consider approval of licenses to sell Christmas trees for the Boy Scouts of America Troop Number 56 in care of John Manini, and for the Wilmington Methodist Church in care of John Arvaneitis. These would both be renewals, and no objection from the police department. Mr. Chairman, nor is there any zoning issue with the building inspector?
Other than objections that winter's coming. Anybody have a problem? Do we have a motion?
I make the motion we grant Troop 56 and the United Methodist Church there to sell the trees.
We get the AC on you, wouldn't know it.
Made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the Board is, has a request from Deborah Cipriani, the Recreation Director for the Recreation Commission, to conduct its 42nd Annual Horribles Parade on Sunday, October 25th, at 4:30 PM. And if you so approve, the members of the Board of Selectmen are asked to join the festivities, either as spectators or volunteers. And the, the folks who are going to participate are asked to assemble in front of the Public Safety Building by Rotary Park at 4:30 PM on Sunday, the 25th, where they will then proceed up Church Street to the high school cafeteria. And volunteers will present all the costumed children with holiday treats. Last year, we estimated that approximately 675 children marched to Wilmington High School. And we really encourage parents, assuming the Board is going to approve, to, if they are going to participate, to really to try to participate from the beginning, because those are the children that really they've been waiting, and it's, it's not particularly fair for folks to just wait at the, at the high school and jump in at the front of the line. And so we would ask everybody to participate the way it's intended if they, they're so inclined.
Do we have a motion?
I would make the motion that we grant the direct department permission for the 42nd Annual Horrible Parade. Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business before the Board, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? Any questions from the press? Hearing none. New business? New business? Anything down here?
Can I have two seconds, Mr. Chairman? I guess I want to chime in on this bottle bill issue that we voted on tonight, and I'm glad we did the way we did. However, I don't want it to be misinterpreted, and I, I don't want to speak on your behalf, the rest of you gentlemen, but I'll speak on my own behalf and let you decide if you want to. I want to make sure that the residents of Wilmington know, and I think it can be demonstrated from my participation in other activities, that recycling is important, that buttoned by, in no ways at all are we are commenting or communicating that we don't support or that, that recycling is something we, we don't take seriously. In fact, to the contrary. It's just that I've made the conclusion that an advance or an increase, an expansion of the bottle bill will not achieve that goal. It effectively ends up being a tax, reaching into our pockets even deeper and hurting the economy even more. I think there are ways for us to increase our recycling efforts, to continue to look out for the planet, and we all should be doing that every day. And I just, I don't want it to be misconstrued or misinterpreted that, that we as a Board acted not in favor of, of the, the ecology. So I would just like to just make that point clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, make a motion and go to executive session.
Hold on, let's get the important date.
October 7th, Mr. Chairman, a reminder of the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange Listening Session at Town Hall, room 9, at 6:00 PM. The Board's next meeting is a Tuesday because of the Columbus Day holiday. It's October 13th. And just a little advance notice that we are opening up the recycling center off of Old Main Street for brush drop-off on October 14th from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and October 17th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Wilmington residents only. No commercial vehicles. Must have a punch card, which they can get here from the Town Hall Treasurer's Office. And again, as you heard, the old and public information meeting will be held at the middle school auditorium at 7:00 PM on October 19th.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Go move.
Okay, for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel in collective bargaining. Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.